I love the man that can smile in trouble. That can gather strength from distress and grow brave by reflection. 'Tis the business of little minds to shrink, but he whose heart is firm and whose conscience approves his conduct will pursue his principles unto death. Tom Spain.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We need a motion to adopt the agenda as recommended by the superintendent.
Second?
With a motion by Ms. Powers and a second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero. Do we have any citizens' comments? Okay, there'll be another opportunity at 5:45. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'm with the approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Deutschman and Ms. Powers. We have a motion by Ms. Deutschman and a second by Ms. Powers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero. And now we have presentations. Oh, excuse me. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Ms. Bertarani. She's gonna tell us our donations.
We have one, and that is a $3,500 donation to the Cantor High School from Ego Buick DMC.
Thank you. And now presentations. Recognition of a donation of $31,000 for vision services from the Citrus County Lions Club.
Superintendent Hemmle, Assistant Superintendent Mr. Mullin, school board members, and school board attorney Mr. Bradshaw. My name is Jessica Hope, and I am the Student Health Specialist and Registered Nurse for the Citrus County School District. If you'll indulge me for just a moment, take a moment and squint your eyes. It's hard to see, right? Things are blurry and they're out of focus. For several children in our school district, this is an everyday practice, as they struggle and strain to see the board, the screen, or textbook before them. In efforts to help our students with vision needs, our local Lions Clubs help to provide vision vouchers by providing National Association of School Nurses memberships to each of our school nurses. Each nurse can request ten vouchers at one time, and each voucher will cover the cost of an eye exam and glasses. This past school year, with the help of the Homosassa Lions Club, we vision screened 4,657 students. One hundred and seventy-one of these students indicated that they would need follow-up with an obstetrician. These vouchers will assist our students in getting vision correction that will directly affect their performance in school. The cost of sight is priceless, and words of thanks are just not enough. I would like to take this opportunity to recognize our Lions Clubs in Citrus County, Homosassa, Crystal River, Inverness, and Beverly Hills. It is with gratitude and immense appreciation that I present, that we present the following certificates to the Homosassa Lions Club. If you'll please come up.
Homosassa, come on up. Come on there.
Got these a picture.
Sure you don't want to start us.
We have a picture live on that.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Yeah, I did, but.
Can I have a copy of that?
No way.
The next is Inverness Lions Club.
Tom Chang.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you all, Jim.
You know, I want to also just thank the Lions. I, because of just one of your screenings that you had for adults in my mid twenties, having not had glasses myself, I stumbled upon thinking, well, this is a silly little test I'm just gonna go and do. To which afterwards, one of, one of the Lions members said, "You do have a ride home," because please do not drive home. And I did have to get glasses right after that, because they really did, they recognized that I needed to have my eyes checked, so, thank you.
And save the rest of it.
And save everybody else.
In closing, in the words of Helen Keller, "There is no better way to thank God for your sight than by giving a helping hand to someone in the dark." On behalf of our students, our nurses, and our staff, thank you for providing that helping hand. Thank you.
Okay, Business and Support Services. Who's gonna do this for Mr. Blocker?
I'm gonna do the first.
Oh, well, probably do need a, well, it didn't say it here. We have a motion to accept this $31,000.
Donation of $31,000 to vision services from the Citrus County Lions. Thirty-one thousand one hundred, excuse me, I need to check my glasses.
We have a motion by Ms. Deutschman and a second by Ms. Powers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero.
Thank you for coming.
Yes, we appreciate it.
We'll all schedule with you.
I didn't know I had to vote on this.
Thank you so much.
Of course. Okay.
Mr. Walker Johnson's for item B1, the approval to be advertised in the tentative 2014 budget for a public hearing to be held on July 30th, 2013 at 5:00 PM. 5:30 PM.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Kennedy and a second by Ms. Deutschman. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero. You have the resources, Mr. Bishop.
Good afternoon. We'd like to request the Board's approval of the instructional and support recommendations.
I always ask you this, and nobody knows the answer. You could guess. You could tell me the wrong answer, whoever knows the difference.
Okay.
Do we have any open teaching positions right now, or are we all filled up?
No, we do have open positions.
How many do we have?
Right now, we have a total of, let's see here, eleven.
Really?
Yes, ma'am.
Interesting. Are these newly opened positions, or are these ones that we just haven't had applicants or haven't had a chance to?
We currently have them on hold, because we have some of our enrollment at the elementary that's not been as good as we thought it was gonna be. Normal this time of year, could be kindergartners just aren't enrolled yet, but we put a hold on that until we start seeing the numbers come up, because, so, some of those may not be filled, we may choose not to fill them. But unlike previous years, there's not a scramble to find teachers this year, there's a surplus.
I know, I just read in the Orange County newspaper yesterday, someone wrote an article that said, "We've hired all of our new teachers in Marion County." I don't know how many layoffs they have, but apparently everyone who had been hired in the last year lost their jobs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Suzie, I won't pay any attention, I apologize if I'm not your attorney, but Suzie monitors those numbers every morning, and she's been in contact with the principals every morning, so then she comes up, and Mike and I, and Suzie, and then we'll call the principals, because there's a couple we may need to move to replace and those kind of things, so.
Yeah, from here on, they change day to day, from here until the start.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the instructional and support recommendations?
I move that we accept the instructional and support recommendations while removing Phyllis Geddes from the list.
We have a motion by Mr. Kennedy and a second by Ms. Deutschman.
And I'm gonna go ahead before our attorney freaks out here, and I'm gonna modify my motion to retract removing Ms. Phyllis Geddes, but it is with much regret that I'm doing that.
And Mike is staying?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, because if I hear, otherwise I'm gonna go get a pair of handcuffs.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Kennedy and a second by Ms. Deutschman. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero.
The next item I have is to request the approval of the athletic and other supplements for 2013-14.
On the first page, it says, wait, oh, maybe not. Oh, employees, please see, the taxless employees eligible, but that's really a list of those who are in that position.
Yes, ma'am, at this time, yes, ma'am. Those names of schools are brought forward.
And I would ask for also about, what is the highest amount of supplement that is paid? The highest supplement we have?
I'm gonna say $3,800.
And the average would be about what?
Ooh, I'd be guessing.
That'd be hard to.
Yes, ma'am, because there's such a wide range.
Mr. Bishop, just for clarification, the supplement of thirty-eight, that's not just athletic, but that's all supplements?
Yes, that's all.
That could be any supplement.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
Yeah, that's what, I just wanna make sure I covered it myself.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'm with approval of the athletic and other supplements for 2013-14.
Second?
We have a motion by Ms. Deutschman, a second by Mr. Kennedy. Do we have any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero.
I'd like to request the Board's approval of the part-time evening in Criminal Justice Fire Academy instructors with the Kucha Tentacle Institute for the 2013-14 school year.
I move to approve the FBI part-time evening with Criminal Justice Fire Academy instructors for 2013-14.
Second?
We have a motion by Ms. Powers and a second by Mr. Kennedy. Do we have any questions or comments?
Just for, and, Mr. Bishop, you may be able to answer this. If I recall, these positions are ones too that they are funded by tuition dollars, by if they don't, meaning, if they don't have paid individuals taking those courses, we don't just simply hire them.
That's one based on need, and there is tuition assigned to those courses.
Thank you.
What happens if they say, "Class makes," and then five students drop out, they continue with the class? Okay, so, it's very committed to.
Is there's ones walking out if you pay?
There's a drop period, yeah. There's a drop period by which you don't get re.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Powers and a second by Mr. Kennedy. Any more questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero. Planning and growth management, I wonder if we could have items one through five approved under one motion?
Works with me.
All right. Well, give me a motion then.
I'm just gonna sit there and don't just say it, just talk it. I move approval to send a request for advertising for a public meeting on September 10th, 2013 on policies eight point four one, eight point four two, eight point four three, eight point four four, and eight point four five.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Powers. Questions or comments? We have been over these before.
These were the workshop to the last one? Yes. Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero, uh, four zero. Getting out of myself here. All right. School operations.
Ms. Kelsey is here. There's questions about the agenda item.
They want to approve a contract for occupational and speech-language therapy.
I pulled it from the agenda, I'm going to approve it, but I have to pull it for certain reasons.
All right, Ms. Powers. We have a motion by Ms. Powers, we have a second. Thank you, Ms. Deutschman.
And the reason, but I wanted to have a clarification on the students that need other, that have other needs, physical needs, such as, we discussed, like cerebral palsy, or any other type of physical need that child might have, if there's someone available to serve him, as well as those who are served in occupations, teacher, librarian, all of that. Because in the past, that was a struggle, and you.
Just catch us all up where we are.
Okay.
If a student is eligible for services, whether it's other health impaired, physical impairment, or whatever their disability is, and they are eligible for services, whether it's speech-language, occupational, or physical therapy, absolutely, they would receive that. Most of our therapists are district employees, but we do fall short in being able to service all of the students. That's why we contract with a chief of rehab for one occupational therapist, one physical therapist, and a certified occupational therapy assistant, and one speech-language pathologist. But regardless of if it's, you know, physical needs, or emotional, cognitive, we would serve all students who are eligible.
And students, I've experienced, I know I have with students who have seizures, multiple seizures, and you have a provision for those students, it's, they have no difficulty with learning or anything, but they have multiple seizures per day.
Yes, if they're eligible for services, regardless of what their medical condition is, physical, you know, we would serve them, yes.
Okay, but it's easier now than it was, maybe, perhaps?
Well, they have expanded, you know, eligibility criteria for services, whether under 504 and IDEA, so, it may be easier now. Depending on what the child's needs are.
Right. Which is such a struggle for a while, you know, a few years back, to be able to get that other faculty there serviced. But from what you mentioned, that now it seems like there's an easier path, there's a clear path to be able to do it, and people there to be able to.
Like we talked about, a specific example of a student who does have cerebral palsy, major physical needs, unable to feed themselves, things like that, however, is very intelligent and working in advanced classes. So, just because they don't need specially designed instruction for academics, they do need specially designed instruction for adaptive materials, equipment, technology, physical needs, things like that. So, absolutely, we would serve that student.
I was very happy with that. Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Ms. Julie, and I appreciate Ms. Powers pulling this. I have a question just on speech pathologists, and indulge me for a moment, I'm gonna ask some perhaps silly questions, but there's a point to it. Do speech pathologists work with our students directly as a instructor?
Yes, they do.
And do these teachers, when they work with our students, are any of their evaluation for their employment, as defined by the state, go back to the students' performance records or their, their performance-based pay for these teachers now?
Yes, they do. But with the speech-language pathologists, we have two different certification or licensures. So, some of them are certified teachers.
Okay.
Some of them are licensed to the Department of Health, so they're not necessarily certified teachers. So, like, our contract therapist is certified through the Department of, I mean, licensed through the Department of Health, but she's not a certified teacher, so that may be.
And do the, both of them do work with students?
Yes, they absolutely all work with students.
Are both of them also paid based on performance, though?
Yes.
So, even, whether they're certified or not certified, they are still under instructional?
They are still under instructional.
And you may know this next part, and I apologize, Mr. Bishop's gum, but, and, are they included as instructional teachers under the mandate that we were put by the state of providing a increase in wages of what we refer to as the $2,500 increase to wages? Are they in that list by name, defined name?
I do not believe they are in that list by defined name.
And I, and I see Mr. Mullin here shaking his head, and I believe the answer is no, they are not.
I think school psychologists were listed.
School psychologists were. And I make this point for the public, I know my fellow board members probably already know this, but I think it's important to again state that instructional teachers that work with our students, that have performance-based pays, were, in my opinion, purposefully left off for some reason. It may have been unintentional at the time, but they are not listed, and it may be something at some point that this board is gonna have to address as we go through this issue of the $2,500 increase in wages that the state has put us under the mandate. So, I, I wanna say just publicly, I apologize for those individual instructional teachers that have been put into that, along with all the other staff members who were not made part of that entire, and I just, you know, we value, I think this district has tried very hard to show, we value special services, individual services. My daughter has made tremendous strides under that program, graduated out of it, but was in it from pre-K years all the way through third grade, and I value it so much. So, thank you, thank for the speech pathologists.
Can you have a question?
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero. We have a motion to approve the minutes.
Move approval of the minutes?
We have a motion by Mr. Kennedy and a second by Ms. Powers. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero. Attorney vehicle matters.
I also have a question, ma'am.
All right. Board members, committee reports, and other business that needs to come before the school board, Mr. Mullin, Ms. Powers, Mr. Kennedy.
Just two things. One is, Mr. Dixon is here, so I was gonna ask a question of him. One, Ms. Hemmel, and I know this question, but I, I had a, an email today, and I thought maybe you could answer it. September 11th, each year, we is Constitutional Day. Our students and teachers at schools, I think, have done a really neat job, but can you maybe just verify that our schools are, have been and will continue to be in compliance with, with that? And maybe just share with us that some of them, I think, even go even farther than just having one lesson, they sometimes have an entire week of activities that.
Our schools plan, like you said, sometimes an entire week of activities. I know on September 11th, we still honor the Mormon Asylum for 9/11, and I know that they bring in guest speakers during that week at all great offices, and I know our Ed Services team is very involved with that, through the city and social studies and.
And I know having an assistant superintendent who very honorably served as an officer in our Army, has pretty strong feelings too about seeing that his principals continue to adhere to that, so, that was brought up, and I.
If you would like a summary, we can certainly gather something.
I think it wouldn't be a bad idea, you know, just sometime before, because I think it's, I think it's great for the public to see what we do, because I get so excited, that's always a fun time of the year to, to go around, but, so, thank you, Ms. Hemmel. Mr. Dixon, too, there was something in the paper recently regarding AES's improvement to be in compliance with the state's requirement for them to be operational. One of the things that was reported that was during the meeting, the commissioners agreed to assist the city of Crystal River with $30,000 from park impact fees to build a public boardwalk with viewing platform and public, and parking facilities at the academy on Fort Island Trail. They also decided to name the new boardwalk after Mr. Metcalf, which, that was wonderful to see, he was a wonderful Madoff, I'm sorry. And he, he was a wonderful man, who did tremendous amount for, for the nature. But it, it was interesting, they were gonna use park impact fees to do that, does that seem like that's all, because that was kind of, that was new to me, that the city was even gonna make that request, and I didn't know how that played with the fact that we have the Jessica Lunsford requirements for the school, they're using park impact fee monies, and I didn't know where it put us, because this has been a little bit of a dilemma that we faced in the past.
Well, I don't think it puts us in a, I think.
School system is who I'm concerned.
Yeah, the school system doesn't have any dog in it. I mean, we're basically, it's not our school, so it's a charter school, so, but I believe that they're going to make, you know, separation between the public area and the school area so that they don't have a Jessica Lunsford issue with that, so, that was one of the reasons why they wanted to put the boardwalk as far away from the school building as they, as they could. As far as the park impact fees, you know, park impact fees are collected in park districts, so they have to use the money for a park in that district in Crystal River, so, if that's a public viewing platform, then that would be inappropriate use for it.
And that would allow that to be impact fee fundable?
Right.
And that work on, okay, that was really, I just kind of saw that and wasn't really sure how it connected with the school board, so.
I don't think it has any bearing on the school board.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. That was all I had.
All right. Mr. Deutschman? Okay, I don't have anything, but I think Ms. Hemmel does.
I would like to ask the chairman to recess for a few minutes so that we can have an executive session.
Do we need to talk about the Value Adjustment Board, or, as far as?
You probably need to update on that.
Yeah, go ahead with that, Henry.
Okay. The Value Adjustment Board's organizational meeting is July 23rd, and the clerk's office has called and asked if we had any, if the school board had an appointed citizen member yet, or if we had any applications received for an appointed appointment, and we haven't received any. Ms. Bertarani hasn't received any, and the Board of County Commissioners hasn't received any, so, but we have to have a citizen, Ms. Deutschman is the school board.
And that is, I'm glad you brought that up, and we're in a meeting, so we can, we can change that. We change it over here.
So, we need to elect a new school board appointed member, but you need a citizen member who is a business owner.
Suzie does.
I know we had two people that were being sort of nominated, people that.
I had two people that I wanted to talk to, when I talked to them, and they were, seemed to couldn't run away from the conversation.
What about Lou? Is anybody else like?
Do you know, I thought about him too.
We should ask him.
Can we get him on? I was gonna say, that's him on the phone. I thought about that too.
Do you have to be a business owner, or just be in a business?
I think the way it's worded, you have to be a business owner, but you don't have to own the space, you can be leasing space.
And I want, because I wondered, Wes, too, because there were some people that I knew that they are realtors, meaning they are, you know, independent contractors.
Well, a lot of times, realtors, they are.
They're just, they, yeah, they're independent contractors.
Makes space for the broker.
Right, which I would think quasi makes them a business, because they file.
I think they're all the, the realtor.
Well, the realtor owns that, and then they own the, the broker owns his, but then there's, yeah, there's usually a compensation for space and advertising.
I don't know if it can be your representative of the business, I think. I don't know if it can be a representative of a business, I think it, it says you have to be a business owner. It may depend on how that structured them, uh, as part of.
Right.
It applies to small business.
So a realtor might not qualify?
Well, they may or may not, they may work for the broker and get paid, or they may be self-employed.
Individual contractors.
I think most of them are self-employed.
If they're been a contractors, then they, you know, they're getting a K1 and they're basically having a business.
And that's, that's what I would assume, and that's almost all.
The other person I might, well, if, if someone like Lou is interested in John Hollowell, it's, John Hollowell's been very interested in what we've been doing for years.
Oh, yeah, that's.
And he does, oh, he's our real estate company.
There's something in there too about you can't represent citizens in, uh, property valuation in a judicial or administrative.
But CJ was, was the previous holder as a broker, so I don't think, I don't think anyone in other, as long as they're not an appraiser.
Right, as long as they're not an appraiser.
They're probably fine, because they're just giving opinions and not.
You can't send in their argument on behalf of something.
Right.
We had some strange discussions in the VAB though.
It's interesting to watch.
And it's interesting.
So Ms. Deutschman, are you wanting to be off the value adjustment board?
I think someone else would.
And do we have anybody that would like to do that?
Mr. Kathy, have you had the honor?
I knew you guys, I was trying so hard to sink down in my seat.
No, you'll like it.
You'll love it.
I have it. It is my turn. I, I.
You'll enjoy it.
I'd like to be his, um.
The backup?
I'm chairman of the board.
I'll be all.
Okay, very good.
Now, let me also tell you this. I will also tell you this, if you're not present, they can't meet.
That's right.
We found that out.
I remember.
Glad to bring us our packets.
And she didn't show up.
Yeah.
But her husband's box at the courthouse.
Yeah, nobody took it, no. It was like the day before the meeting.
Where are we, where do we get our notification of the meeting, other than going on their website?
We got Ms. Lindon on that, and she would call down the.
Oh, thank you for taking care of us again.
I remember Bill would fly out of here at times because we were meeting at the same time.
Do we need to vote on Thomas or just appoint him?
Let's vote.
All those in favor?
And we appoint Thomas as a VAB representative for the school board and Ms. Powers as the, I'll, I'll.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Carrie's four zero.
No, no, it'll be fine. It'll be fine. It is, it is good for the learning, and I, so I.
And we're trying to get you a citizen person to help you?
Yes, please.
All right.
You know.
Okay, before we, before I call an adjournment, we need to have an executive session. What am I, am I recessing? Before I call a recess, before we go out to recess. Do we have anything else? Okay, so who has to leave?
You know what?
Everybody has to leave?
Before everybody leaves, because I don't know if anybody's coming back. Ms. Vicki was just at a national conference, and I believe Common Core was talked about, wasn't it? Could you, do you mind just giving, because I think the board, I think these board members would be interested in just a couple of, because I just saw some of your comments and I thought it was actually really good.
What do you want to know?
You know, just, just, you know, what's the, what's the pulse of what's?
Give us a summary.
Yeah.
Sure, come on here.
I was just running back from a call real quick. Well, we talked about, oh, do you need me to state my name?
No, that's okay.
Um, we talked about the Common Core. Basically, they were bringing up new business items on how we can fight the Common Core. And one thing that we really, um, well, how we can really, you know, go after instead of just supporting, it's usually just support. And one member from Florida, Hillsborough County, actually, um, brought up a nice new business item to actually, he had a really good plan to actually go after and really work on the Common Core rather than just, um, you know, just, let's, let's just look at it, let's support it, let's, you know, just go backwards behind it. Instead, he had a really good plan of, let's go after the, the state and say, this is what you need, you know, go after the Department of Education. And, um, it was, it would cost $2 million. So it was a great debate. I had to leave for the airport to fly back and I had to stay for that. And it was back and forth, back and forth for a long, long time, and it was defeated. And instead, the amendment was approved, and the amendment would cost nothing unless to support. Again, it wasn't there to fight it, so there is a plan.
I thought I'd heard you say, and clarify this, was it to support the standards? But there was a difference between the standards and the testing or something, it seemed like there was a separation.
Yeah, that, that's right there, there's, there's, you know, because this was national, so all the different states are hearing all these different things of the Common Core. And Florida is really the only one that's really for, I mean, I shouldn't say we're the only ones, but we understand the Common Core. The Florida Education Association also isn't, wants the Common Core as well, because they see the standards as valuable, and they were in the process of it with them, you know, making it with them. The other states are all saying, this is horrible, um, you know, the Common Core, they don't even tell us what the standards are. But we are working with them, so there was quite a bit of debate on that as well.
And that was what I was appreciating, because I, it seemed to be that, you know, I, I read some national reports and they'd be like, uh, the teachers' union against Common Core. And then I'd read some of the Florida stuff and it was like, no, 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 we're not saying we're against the standards. But there is implementational issues.
The only thing that, the only thing that we're against and that we're trying to fight against is the timing.
Right.
Of trying to push this so quickly and not being able to go through the process and let's see, is it really going to work? Is it valid, you know, is, is there validity to it? And then also too, you know, um, just, don't sit there and say, right away now, the 10th graders have to start working with us and passing it. I mean, that's ridiculous. So the timing is the only thing. We want more time to develop it, we want more time to work with it, and don't try to push it. But the, um, there is an organization out there, and we had, do have some Florida teachers in it, and it's VAB, I'm not going to say it, but it's, it's a bad word in it. But, um, they, they are against the Common Core, and that's what you probably saw on the Facebook, because I was responding to that.
Yeah.
One person that was in, in it, and I'm trying to tell this person, you know, FBA is very strong for Common Core, just, we just don't like the implementation of it right now, the timing.
And that was what I thought, so I appreciated you sharing.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate it. Okay, so I'm going to call a recess, and we're going to have an executive session, which means just about everybody needs sleep.